At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to redress the city council during the meeting and you are here in person, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes speaking time. We will now have a Zoom broadcasting announcement by our city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of February 23rd is open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N. 2920 issued by Governor Newsom, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 827-8130-5203, and enter password 325122. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I will call to order the city council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace, February 23rd, 2021. Tonight's invocation will be offered by Father Anthony Waturocha of the Christ the Redeemer Catholic Church in Grand Terrace. Father Anthony?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, brother. Let us pray. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. God of all creation, in the book of Genesis, Chapter 39, verse 8, you lifted Joseph from obscurity and gave him so much leadership ability that his master placed him in charge of everything he had. We ask you, most gracious God, to put an excellent spirit in your servants and our elected officials, our mayor, Darcy McNaboe, all council members, and all who are directly involved in the administration of Grand Terrace County, just as you put in Daniel and Joseph, and made them excel in leadership and administration. We pray for all those who work in various capacities to ensure our county's smooth functioning. We pray for the police force members, the firefighters, the medical personnel, teachers, parents, men, women, and all your children. Through their generous and dedicated services, may our county of Grand Terrace continue to make tremendous progress in all aspects of life. Anoint us with the Holy Spirit and power so that we may speak and leave out your word with boldness. Protect us from every form of evil and give us victory over temptations. Fill us with a spirit of holiness, humility, empathy, prayer, selflessness, and salvation. Please, Lord, eradicate the COVID-19, its variants, and all forms of illnesses from our society. Heal those living in fear, those who contracted the virus, and many sick people in different forms. Welcome the souls of our beloved relatives and friends in heaven, and console our brothers and sisters who have lost their loved ones. We also pray for state and federal leaders, that you imbue them with the same selfless spirit with which your son, our Lord Jesus Christ, died to save us all. Help us always to worship and adore you, the one through God. We make all our prayers through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
And the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father Anthony. At this time, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Yes. A pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you again, Father Anthony, and thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Councilmember Robles?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Present.
Mayor McNaboe?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a presentation tonight on our pavement management program status by interim Public Works Director Craig Bradshaw.
There we go. Craig Bradshaw, interim Public Works Director. I think to just give you an overview of the pavement management program, we did a brief update this past week, and it's not quite perfect, this pavement management program. It was originally, the streets were graded back in 2015, 2016, so the data is getting a little bit old in the streets, but this should give us a good idea of where we're at. Okay, what is a pavement management program? It's a specialized asset management system. It's an inventory. It accesses current conditions. It records pavement treatments and analyzes and predicts future conditions based on maintenance and budget strategies, and it suggests future pavement treatments. And it's basically from zero to 100. 100 is excellent, then it kind of breaks down. It's a fairly simple numbering system. This is the pavement lifecycle. Engineers get excited about these types of things. Most other people kind of just glaze over it. But to maintain, this is a typical pavement life curve, about 40% of the quality of a brand-new pavement, it drops. It costs about a dollar per square foot to maintain, and typically, you do not do anything until it drops down to about 85 or 90. And it's fairly inexpensive preventive maintenance. The next 40% drop in quality gets very expensive, and the curve steepens a great deal, and in order to either overlay or to reconstruct a roadway, it can run anywhere from $5 to $12 per square foot if you're rebuilding a roadway. Here's the treatments linked to the pavement condition index. Up in the excellent area, we do joint and crack sealing and surface seals, we call them slurry seals, and then going down, further down the curve, we do some patching and thinner overlays, and then we do thicker overlays, and of course, reconstruction is where it's real expensive. Okay, crack sealing and patching, you're probably very familiar with the crack sealing. I put some numbers in here, just so you can give you an idea of magnitude of cost. It can run 10 cents per square foot. It really depends on the density and the number of cracks. But typically, we like to crack though when we see block cracking, and that's kind of the pattern that you're seeing in that picture. And then also, the patching is typically done to repair. We call it deep patch, is where the surface of the street is failing. In many cases, utility trenches are the cause of those problems, and we go after the utilities to repair their own trenches. Slurry seal is basically an asphalt emulsion. It's usually used to help rehabilitate the streets in the 47 to 67 index, pavement condition index. A slurry seal is about 25 cents per square foot, relatively inexpensive, and micro-surfacing is about a 3/8 of an inch of a wearing surface, and it's about 50 cents per square foot. And typically, if you have like a major arterial, you may want to use the micro-surfacing because it provides a much better wearing surface. An arterial or very busy street, the slurry seal may last a year, and so you'd want to use the micro-surfacing. Chip and cape seal. We'll be talking a little bit about that later on when we award our contract. The cape seal is about a dollar per square foot. What it is, it's, they put down a rubberized interlayer. It's made from recycled tires. It's extremely tough and durable. It's about 3/8 of an inch thick. They place it down at the proper temperature, then they place the chip, the rock, and they roll that into that matrix. And then they come back later and they'll do a cape seal over the top of that. Fairly heavily damaged or alligatored streets, this works extremely well for holding those streets together. That rubberized interlayer, the rubberized membrane that's put down, in the Caltrans specification books, they say that's equivalent to 1.6 inches of a rubberized asphalt, as far as cracks reflecting through. So it's an extremely good way to help rehabilitate seriously damaged streets. And of course, you have the overlays. A thin overlay is really anything less than two inches. A thick structural overlay is two inches and more. And so, a structural overlay of two inches of rubberized asphalt is about $2 per square Full-depth reclamation, that's where the street is pretty much fully failing. When we did, I should have put in some pictures of the Grand Terrace roadway that we did the full-depth reclamation. It was horrendous looking. It made the street, picture of the street look really good. But to remove and replace, depending on what you're rebuilding, it costs somewhere between $5 to $12 per square foot to do full-depth reconstruction. If you're doing full-depth pavement recycling, what they do is you pulverize the pavement, and you'll go down anywhere from eight to maybe even 16 inches, and you add cement, typically 4%, cement is added, it's mixed in, added with water. It creates a concrete matrix that is later microfat fractured after about three days, and then they're paved, and then you pave on top of that. What we did over at Grand Terrace cost us actually just a little over $3 per square foot, and it's a very effective way of rebuilding streets. And this is just some pictures of what's involved in mixing and compacting and paving. Regarding ADA, if you're just putting down crack seal, slurry, or chip seal, there's not a need to upgrade handicap ramps. If you're doing an overlay or a full-depth reclamation, you're required to do the ADA upgrades. And most of the handicap ramps in the City of Grand Terrace, they're the older-style ramps, and they require an upgrade. Here are our current conditions. We just ran this again this morning. I think in the report I said our average PCI was 68. This time, when they ran, they came up with 67. With arterials, the average PCI, this is after our resurfacing, we're proposing, is completed. So this will be, this summer, this will be what the average PCI will be. 69 for arterial, 60 for collectors, 70 for residential, and our average PCI is 67. And in 2016, our PCI was 59, so it has come up a bit from 2016. And here's a breakdown based on percentages, very similar type of table, but it gives you an idea. We have quite a few streets in the excellent to good and in the fair category, but it's really the poor and very poor streets that really drag down the index and really raise the costs up. Okay, we put together a table as if we had unlimited funds, which is true for no one, but the optimal goal, we'd say a PCI of 81. Countywide, the PCI is right around 74. But 81 is really an excellent, excellent street. But we're looking at total costs. It's interesting how it's broken down. If you look at 2021, if you're looking at just preventive maintenance, it's about $600,000. But the rehab and reconstruct is 5.1 million. So it ends up being 5.7 million at the end of the year. So a lot of the cost has to do with rehab and reconstruction, so we want to, you know, try to keep streets from getting into that category. And then you can see at the very end, if you go out to 2025, it's 11.7 million. If we, you know, took you the total cost over the five years, if we wanted to get a PCI up to 81. Here's just some budget comparisons. At $200,000 a year, deferred maintenance would be 10.8 million, and it would be at the end of the five years, and the PCI at the end of five years would go down to 62. If you double the budget, the PCI would raise up to about 6.4. And you triple the budget, the PCI would raise up to about 67, but you're still, you have a tremendous outlay for deferred maintenance to accomplish those goals. And this is extremely hard to see, but the yellow is chip seal, is primarily slurry seal. Well, I'm sorry, the first one, the blue, is, this is for a three-year plan. The blue is slurry seal, and then we have what it is, it's called a cape seal, or it's a chip seal and slurry seal. That's the yellow. And then the darker one is AC overlay. This is more easily seen on the computer. We also have something, a very similar, whoops, let me go back one, very similar one that has PCIs on all the streets. If you look at some of these streets, like Michigan, the PCI is like 3 in 5. The streets have totally failed. We did notice a couple of mistakes. We show, we still show Grand Terrace Road that we rehabilitated this past fall. We did not update that on the map. That's a correction we need to make. And I believe in this case, we showed Lockadina being resurfaced, but we didn't, we didn't show the portion of Barton Avenue, Barton Road that we're proposing to rehabilit, to resurface. So there's a few little inconsistencies here we'll need to update. That shouldn't change the PCI overall very much. Can we blow it up a little bit? No, you probably have to do it on our end. Can't do it. It's not easily done. We can get you a copy of this, or digital copy. I believe it wasn't provided, well, this copy may not have been provided.
I believe this one is in our packet on page 10.
Okay, to maintain our current PCI of 68, the first year, the budget's nominal, because this is the year that we're doing the resurfacing, but then, the next year, 2022, we're looking at about 900,000. So roughly about 900,000 each year will maintain the current PCI of 68. City's pavement network is worth over 35 million. Of course, it provides vital public transportation, multi-molda use, and delivery of goods and services. And well-maintained roadways are critical for local economy and a source of community pride, and the city will never achieve a less costly preventive maintenance mode. And it's really hard to kick the preventive maintenance portion down the road because it, because it's really hard to get caught up. Recommendations, identify PCI goal for city or identify minimum level of annual funding. At a minimum, suggest increasing funding to maintain current network of PCI of 68 by 2025. Create pavement maintenance strategies that include cost-effective balance of preventive maintenance and reconstruction rehab to meet the city's PCI goal. And it's important that we survey the streets every two to three years for arterials and collectors, and three to four years for residential streets. And so the streets are really due to be surveyed again. I think it'd be important prior to the next large resurfacing project that the streets be resurveyed, because what happens in the program, we come up with a score based on the condition of the street, and it, every year, it deducts about three points. And some streets will follow that curve really close, and other streets will be much faster, and some streets will have very little loss in pavement life. So it's important to keep it updated. And of course, identify new funding sources. Potential funding sources, I think these have probably been explored in the past, but truck route permit fees, that's business license, waste collection fee, that's an existing fee, development impact fees. Those can be effective if you have new development coming in, and you can create a nexus between their development and the streets, and the need for funding for the streets. Pursue local sales tax measure, devote more measure I in tax revenues to road maintenance. Devote some general fund to road maintenance, at least initially to address backlog, and perhaps establish localized business assessment improvement districts, or citywide assessment districts. Investigate the current receipt of RSTP, Regional Surface Transportation Program, funds that are eligible for pavement maintenance. Pursue CalRecycle grants for rubberized chip seals and overlays. That grant is actually coming up to apply for again, and will be due here in about a month. The previous CalRecycle grant expired, and the funds were returned, or we would be using it on this upcoming project. Pursue other grants, ATP grants, that may include some pavement rehabilitation features, or the California Infrastructure and Economic Development Bank. And we've been looking for the I-Bank loans, and we really have not been successful to date identifying those funding sources. Regarding the other infrastructure, there's a large number of locations that have been inventoried for ADA compliance. We came up with 461 locations that need improvement. The cost is roughly $840,000 in construction. The ADA self-assessment is required by the ADA Act, and we have to develop a proprietary list and try to schedule that for construction through the CIP process, or else funding can be withheld on many of these funding sources. And that concludes my remarks. I'm glad to answer your questions.
Thank you, Director Bradshaw. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
Mr. Bradshaw, does anybody know what the threshold is for designating a roadway a secondary highway, even if it's in a local jurisdiction?
There's actually, there's two classifications. Caltrans has their own classification, and in many cases, that's very outdated. And usually, most of the traffic engineers will look at functional, how it functions. Collectors will collect several streets, and arterial is a main thoroughfare through the city, and usually, the general plan will lay out what's considered an arterial and what's a collector, and what's residential. And so usually, we refer, usually, we'll end up referring to the general plan, general plan transportation, circulation element, and that's usually what we consider the functional classification.
Well, the reason why I ask, Madam Mayor, the thought pattern, and I think it was brought up at one point, but maybe we didn't pursue it, and that is, we have a tremendous amount of traffic now that goes up and down, or north-south on several of our roads, and it would seem to me that those roads were probably installed during the county purview. And because of that, as you know, the underlying condition wasn't mitigated before it was put down. In fact, in some instances, all that was put down was sand and gravel, and then they put the asphalt on top of it. I got to think that a case could be made that, because of the arterial nature, which I believe we've designated in our general plan, that we might be eligible for some kind of outside funds to take care of our, some of our reconstruction that's planned.
Yeah, there is a funding source, it's called CPNA, and I think we were allocated, I'm trying to recall this, 2.7 to 3.7 additional million dollars, and currently, that's earmarked for the extension of Commerce Way, but we could certainly look at perhaps reallocating those funds if it makes sense.
Well, I'm thinking, especially since a lot of the construction to the south of us has been, you know, either planned or is in play, and I know we do derive some impact fees from that, but I wouldn't say that that would really take care of what we're planning on doing. You know, it'd be better to be able to pad our fund with some monies that could, you know, be designated because of that secondary arterial situation, because we know that Barton Road is used for that, and we also know that Mount Vernon is often used for that, and in some cases, Michigan. So I was just thinking that maybe that's a pot we can stir in.
Yeah, good, good point. Well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Allen, and then Mayor Protem Hussey.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Bradshaw, these PCI numbers that you were referencing on this map on page 10 that we see here, is that, are those, do you use those in your decision-making process on whether to make it a red, yellow, or blue stripe on that road?
Yes, entirely.
Okay.
Before, when we're actually putting together a resurfacing project, we will go out and look at all the segments and verify that the treatment we're using makes sense.
Right.
But you need to have a tool like this so you can have the broad overview of what's happening in the town.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. My question about that is, because later on in this, in our agenda, later on tonight, we're going to be asked to consider approval of funds to repave Lockadina, and I see the number on Lockadina is 100, and I'm just wondering...
Lockadina is 100 because we assume that...
And there's no color stripe on it?
We assumed, we assumed that work was going to be done, and so we included it in this presentation.
Oh, okay then.
Yeah, and we did miss, we did miss the, originally, we thought we were only going to have funding for Lockadina and not that piece of Barton, and so we did not include Barton last week, and all this kind of changed a little bit when we opened bids.
Okay, so Lockadina has not been fixed yet, though?
No, it hasn't.
So what would the real number be for Lockadina, then?
Oh, I think we had it on that sheet. It's fairly low.
I don't know, it's 100 here?
Yeah, it's like 30 or something like that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Mayor Protem Hussey?
Mr. Bradshaw, you talked about cape seal and rubber, recycled rubber seal, and of course, with the AC slur. My concern is every time we do road construction and seal all this, you know, we always have the utility company that comes back and dig it up. If we do the rubberized seal and the cape seal, if we did that, is it going to be guaranteed? Do they have, what protocols in place that they have to replace the same type of sealant on there? Or are they just going to use their standard sealant? And then can the cape seal be compromised like that, cut open after it's already laid down?
If they come back in and do a proper patch with proper compaction, the longevity is very high. It's going to last as long as a cape seal. There are standards, San Bernardino County has standards that states how much of a roadway, usually it's a lane width, they need to repave, and they give limits. And that's what we're requiring of the utility companies right now. We refer to that standard, and they see how they're supposed to patch, we inspect that, and then they, and we also show them where they have to do a slurry seal to match the lane width.
Well, if we had, if we went to different sealant, we had to guarantee they're not going to mix the seal, or is that all right?
No, in this case, I don't believe we've ever, I need to look at the county standards. I believe they have a three-year moratorium on touching streets, and we try to coordinate with utilities, but emergencies always come out and we get these street cuts. I think we just have to be very vigilant in what we require them as far as repairs go. It's what it comes down to.
All right, thank you.
Actually, I think on Preston Street, south of Barton, we had a real nice resurfacing there, and there was a gas leak, and the gas company had to come and cut it up, speaking of your emergencies.
Right.
A couple of questions. One, you were showing the sealing before you put in a slurry seal, you know, the little crack?
Oh, right, the crack fill?
And the interesting thing is, is when that's done, it doesn't hit every single crack, and that seems to, that seems to alert residents to the fact that perhaps it wasn't completely done.
It's very ugly, and generally, most cities have a hard time doing it without getting lots of complaints. And so we try to coordinate that when we do slurry seal. Slurries are good for, on residential streets, we say five to seven years. We usually push it to seven years, but we do the crack fill and slur immediately at, you know, within six months after that. you know, within six months after that. But the crack fill is very effective, there's minimum requirements, you get down to a certain size, they don't, they won't fill those cracks. There's a specification.
Right, and I think that's probably the question on a lot of people's minds, is how did, how did they miss so many cracks when clearly they're there, but-
Right.
But that's not the goal, is what you're telling me?
No, you actually can't get that asphalt mastic material to go down in the real narrow cracks. The idea is, is when you slurry, the slurry picks up those remaining cracks.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
The CalRecycle grant you mentioned, I need to ask, how much was returned and why was it returned?
Typically with those grants, they pay $10 per ton for the rubberized asphalt, and so it's based on your expenditures. If you don't have projects to use the funding for, then after, I think it's after two years that the funds get relinquished and they have another cycle, they have a cycle every two years.
Okay, will we be penalized from receiving that again since we didn't use it?
No, the first year you receive them, I think it's $10 a ton, and then the next year is, there's kind of a sliding scale, I think it's like $7 a ton the next time we apply.
Okay, so it defrays the cost, it doesn't really cover it?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, asphalt's about $100 a ton roughly, so it could defray it, you know, somewhere between 7% and 10% of the cost.
Okay, and then the ADA ramps, and there's, there always seems to not be enough money for us to do anything with ADA requirements. Are there grant sources for those types of, for the ramps in particular?
I am not aware of a grant specifically for ADA ramps. Usually what you try to do is if you get a active transportation grant to add, say, bike lanes, you include all the ADA ramps. And that's one approach. So you try to include it with other grants. Whenever you do a major improvement, you need to upgrade ADA ramps. Occasionally, there will be a grant that will come up, it'll come out of the blue, and all the cities are scrambling and competing for the funding, but those are very rare.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, thank you so much for the report. It's good to have an update where we are and let us know what we need to do in the future, and we'll hear more from you later on tonight.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Next item is reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda. Do we have any of those that we need to act on?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They are to be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion for approval by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do we have any requests for public comments on items not on the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so I will open public comment and I will close public comment and move on to public hearings. We have none. We have no unfinished business, so on to new business. Item number seven on our agenda is a sales tax sharing agreement with S.E.R.J. Taco California LLC. This is a California limited liability company that will be operating Taco Bell Restaurant at the corner of Barton Road and Viviana/Commerce Way. Mr. Harold Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, for the record to you, Harold Duffy, City Manager. So tonight, I want to talk to you about an economic development program, which the council has seen in the past regarding Taco Bell. So tonight's presentation, we'll talk about the sales tax, a sales tax sharing agreement with Surge Taco. It's a franchisee for Taco Bell, and also passed agreement the city has had with Surge Taco. So this first picture here is put up to answer a question that I've had over the last couple of weeks, that Taco Bell, that purple, will not be there, it will be hidden by the wood.
Oh, I liked, I liked the purple. I've had people tell me they liked the purple, but it doesn't fit with the Barton Road specific plan color palette.
Okay, so I wanted to put that up there. And so tonight, we're going to talk about the benefits of the Taco Bell, which was approved by the Planning Commission on 12/12/2020. It was also, the address is 22172 Barton Road. It's 20, it's 2,080 square feet, it's a drive-through restaurant. I believe that 12/12 number is 2,019, not 20. So the potential revenue for Taco Bell would be, for the city would be, if a new restaurant opening up would generate about $1.2 million in the beginning of its annual year, initial year, and it would be about $12,000 in sales tax for the city. Because the building's worth about $2.7 million, the structure's $2 million, and the land was $750,000, we would get a property tax of about $5,500. Would be a total annual revenue of about $17,500. Now, on average, a Taco Bell after the first year would generate about $1.6 million in annual sales, so we'd have $16,000 in sales tax and property tax would be the same. So our revenue would generate between $17,500 and $21,500. And this is just a 3D model from our video that we started off with the Barton Road Interchange Project. We've also brought it down on Barton Road, so this is what the actual video looks like in terms of placing Taco Bell, and the actual site will look like this, very similar to this, when it's complete. So on 7/28/2020, the City Council waived building fees as a first step in convincing the project to continue. Just a bit of history here is that the project was to move forward, the original franchisee pulled out right at COVID-19, and so we met with Taco Bell Corporate and the new franchisee, Surge Taco, on the site. Corporate was very excited about the site, and so to incentivize the project to move forward, we brought to the council this economic development agreement, and part of it was a $35,000 reduction, a waiving of the city's building fees. The overall fees, after the city waived its fees, was about $30,000 in school fees, fire fees, and other fees. So it was about $60,000, $65,000 in total fees in order to be permitted for this particular It's kind of a, kind of a listing of all the different fees that are there for the city. So once again, the sales tax rebate program would look at the sales, if they, if the, in the initial year that Taco Bell generates less than $1.6 million, we would give Taco Bell a sales tax rebate of $8,300, leaving the city after the remaining sales tax and property tax about $9,000 a year. But we are very confident that the market is going to be very strong and that we believe that it will hit the $1.6 million in the initial year, and so if that does occur, then there will be, there will be no sales tax rebate sharing program. So the goal here is to, because of COVID-19, the goal is to, because the market sort of, they thought, we, on a statewide, national average, the markets appear to be down. But as I provided the council with one of the attachments, in Grand Terrace, we're actually doing pretty well in terms of casual dining and our entire sales tax because of the businesses that are located here. And so we believe that though, that they will reach the $1.6 million, which will give us $16,000 in sales tax, and there will be no need, as I said earlier, for a sales tax The other plus to this particular program is that it's an economic development incentive and creation of jobs. So it'll be 35 employees or 20 FTEs that are employed at this Taco Bell location. This is a snapshot from the internet where you see they're already advertising for crew members, shift managers, and the general manager for our local Taco Bell. So I said before, the projected construction cost is $2 million and the value of the land is $750,000. And so what Taco Bell, the franchisee is doing is he is leasing the space, the land, and he's responsible for the entire land and the building on site. So the total value is $2.7 million for the project. And I'm available for any questions the council and the mayor might have.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. What questions do we have for staff? All right, I have a question that's tangential to the whole thing. My understanding was that there's a tree that is right on the corner of that project. It's between the sidewalk and the street, and that was going to be part of the project for that to come down. Has that changed?
It has not changed. That tree will be coming down, and it is, I think what's taking it so long is that tree sits on top of a gas line. And so they have to be very careful in terms of rerouting the gas and before they remove the tree, but that tree's sitting right in the driveway to the property.
Yeah, I kind of thought they would do it before they built their building, but that's okay. And so $8,300 a year is enough of an incentive for them?
I think the big incentive was the $35,000 to kickstart the project. The $8,000 represents really, if you look at it, maybe one lease payment per year. And I think the major concern was if, on average, a new location does 1.2, what would that look like in COVID? So they were really concerned about that, but we're, as I said, we're seeing that the data shows that the fast food industry hasn't really been significantly impacted as other restaurants and other sectors of the economy have been.
All right, thank you. See no questions?
Yes, on second thought.
Okay, Councilmember Wilson.
Were there ever any studies, because we were pretty much out of this loop, were there any studies done in relation to leaving the tree?
There was, I don't believe that there was. I think that the tree was examined to determine whether it was healthy or not. I do believe that it did pass that muster, but if you look at that tree, just look at it, and you see that it is a leaning tree. And so I think one of the concepts was to a controlled takedown versus a natural takedown because of destruction of property. I actually called our insurance, our JPIA, and asked questions about that in terms of liability and so on and so on. And so the liability is not that great, depending on how the tree falls, when it falls, but you certainly have some liability. It is, right now, it's a city tree, and as part of the project, they were required to take it out and put it in the driveway.
Madam Mayor, I have a question as to whether this tree has historic value for the city of Grand Terrace.
What historic value would that be? Somebody of note that planted it?
I don't know the background, other than 40 years that I've been here, that it's been there. But I don't, I don't know as to whether it would be designated some type of historic value. I know that a lot of the people in this, in the city are going to be really unhappy when they find that it's gone. I think it would be worth to look at some kind of alternatives in order to be able to keep the tree.
Mr. City Attorney?
Well, for tonight's action, that's really not, not before us. However, I believe that this project will go before the Planning Commission, is that correct?
I thought it did.
Yes, it was, it was, it go before the-
It went before the Planning Commission's sequel was done.
Okay.
And presumably, they would have looked at the historic nature of the tree before, as part of the sequel review, and I don't believe it was designated as historic. Maybe Mr. Weiss could speak to that, but I don't believe it was designated as historic.
Mayor Mcnebo and council members, as part of that, it did go before the Planning Commission in December of 2019, and the tree was part of the project. In fact, if the tree was to remain, one of the project driveways would be affected by the project. The question regarding its historical value, there is nothing in the general plan that talks about these species of trees being a candidate for historical significance. So at that level, at that point, there is no, there's no information, and it's not a protected species based on the general plan.
Thank you, Director Weiss.
Madam Mayor, I have a tree that leans in my backyard. It leans pretty, I'm going to say 20 degrees at least, maybe 30, out of, out of vertical, yeah, vertical. And I don't know that that is a significant reason. I know it's not diseased. I think we might be treading in some scary waters here if we just unilaterally tear it down.
Well, that wasn't the condition-
Mr. Duffy.
-why the tree needed to be removed. The tree is sitting in the driveway of the, of the project, and, and so I can tell you that it's leaning, but that's just anecdotal. What I, what I would say to you is that as part of the land use process, that that tree was a part of the entire process. The application went before the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission approved it along with the tree being, being removed. And so I think that-
So that would be a change to the project that would be approved if it was, if it was left there?
Oh, absolutely. It basically would halt the project, and they're scheduled to open in April.
Okay.
My question would be then, do we know for a fact that it was, that was analyzed during the part, or if it was just part of the package? Planning Commission is an advisory to this council. Obviously, we have the appellate opportunity to decide what real project is going to go on the project. I hesitate to think that if we leave this to the assumption that it was reviewed, that we're, again, we're treading in dangerous waters.
Well, sir, I didn't want to give the wrong impression that the Planning Commission reviewed any sort of analysis. What I, my intent was to say that staff did the staff work and presented the information to the Planning Commission. And so staff can go back and review the record again, if you'd like to, but that, as a part of that whole process, staff reviewed the site plan, reviewed all of the information, and recommended as part of its work to the Planning Commission, the project that they approved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. What kind of tree is it? Do you know? Anybody know? Is it a walnut tree?
I don't believe it's walnut.
I don't either.
It's like a pine tree, isn't it?
It's a pine, it's a pine tree.
It's a pine tree.
Yeah.
All right.
My, my, my actual question was from Mr. Duffy. I know this, in the pictures of the restaurant, it said 2,080 square feet drive-in, drive-up restaurant. Is there any dining in, will there be any dining in available?
Yes.
Okay.
They're seating inside, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Hey, Mayor, I'll move the, all three recommendations.
Second.
Okay, staff recommendation moved by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Mcnebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Move to item eight, which is award on-call contracts for concrete and asphalt maintenance to Jonescape Inc., on-call asphalt pothole repair to Hardy and Harper Inc., and on-call asphalt pothole repair to Roque Inc. Mr. Craig Bradshaw, interim Public Works Director.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Craig Bradshaw, interim Public Works Director. Jump into this. The city of Grand Terrace has a need for on-call services to repair damaged concrete, repair asphalt potholes, damaged asphalt and concrete can create hazardous conditions for pedestrians and motorists. Staff has utilized the new procedures under Chapter 3.24 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code to obtain pricing quotes on the on-call services. We contacted 21 contractors utilizing the Chapter 3.24 procedures, and five contractors submitted proposals. The city received a total of five bids, however, two of the five bidders only submitted proposals for the asphalt work, and the request for bids allowed for bidders to bid some or all the requested work. This is the breakdown of the top three bidders. Jonescape had by far the better pricing for the concrete work. You should note at the bottom, their asphalt work is $575 per ton, but they have a two-ton minimum. minimum. Jonescape, they do not have an asphalt contractor's license, but they can certainly do their asphalt work where they do concrete removals. Hardy and Harper had, as far as asphalt work goes, had the better pricing at $3,375, but they requested a six-week notice. And Roquet, their price for a full day's worth of work with the crews and asphalt was $4,509, roughly $4,500. They are local, and they do quite a bit of the work for the water company here in the city. So we're recommending that both of Roquet and Hardy and Harper receive a contract regarding asphalt work, and Jonescape receive the contract regarding the concrete work. Staff's estimating our annual cost for on-call concrete and asphalt maintenance repairs $60,000 annually for the fiscal year 2021. Anyway, the estimated cost for the remainder of this year is about $20,000, which is included in the city's fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. Staff recommends that the city council award the contracts for on-call concrete and asphalt maintenance to Jonescape in the amount of $30,000, on-call asphalt pothole repair to Hardy and Harper in the amount of $15,000, and the other pothole repair contract to Roquet in the amount of $15,000. And authorize the city manager to execute each of these contracts, subject to city attorney approval as to form. That concludes my remarks. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Questions at this time? All right, see no questions. Are there respect, requests to speak on this item from the public?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, motion approved as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wilson and a second by Mayor Protem Hussey. Please call the vote. Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey? I'm sorry, Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item nine, award contract to Onyx Paving Company for $663,000 plus a 10, 10% contingency for road maintenance and rehabilitation project. Again, Mr. Craig Bradshaw, interim Public Works Director.
Okay. Jump into this. A little bit of background. The city's capital improvement program was first approved on November 15 of 2016 by the city council, and it's based on a pavement management program, existing road conditions that assign a pavement condition index PCI to each city street. And we just discussed this previously. It gives the breakdown of what the PCI index means. Scope of work, it involves a cap seal of 11 streets, and the cap seal is, again, the use of a rubber interlayer about 3/8 inch thick with a chip or a rock that's been rolled into the hot matrix, and then it's later it's slurried and then re-rolled again, and it provides a very strong lasting street surface. The reconstruction of Mount Vernon and Canal, including the handicap ramps, and two-inch grind and rubberized asphalt overlay on Barton Road from Honey Hill to the city's limit, North City Limit, and a two-inch grind and rubberized asphalt overlay on Locadina Road from Barton Road to Litten Road. And it's just kind of a graphic that shows the names of the streets. It's like we're missing Locadina on that.
Poor Locadina.
Yeah, Locadina, what did I say?
I said, poor Locadina.
Yeah, poor Locadina. We keep on missing. Okay, it should, Locadina is shown on this this map. This shows all the locations that are involved, really spread throughout the city. We were actually very concerned because the contractor was jumping around quite a bit. That his remobilization cost was going to be very high, but surprisingly, the contractors were very hungry, and mobilization was really minimal. Here's the list of the streets. All the streets down to the last three will receive the cap seal. I should mention, and then Barton Road and Locadina will receive the two-inch rubberized asphalt. Renee Lane's kind of a special situation. That's a, a street we're working with. I believe it's the, is it City of Riverside? They have a facility at the end of the street, and they've tentatively agreed to pay for half of, half of that cost to fix that roadway. Okay, there are three bid elements, and there's the base bid. That's all the streets except Barton Road and Locadina. So it's really, it's all the streets that are receiving the cap seal, primarily residential streets, and I think there's some portions of some collector streets. Then there's an add alternate one, that's Barton Road from City Limit to Honey Hill. Then there's an add alternate two, that's Locadina, Barton Road to Litten Avenue. Now, in the contract, we stated that to determine the lowest, determining the lowest responsible bidder is the sum of all three bid elements. You have to be very clear. And so that's what we're looking at. We're looking at the bottom line cost of all those three elements. And here's the results of the bids. We had five bidders. We actually had probably virtually every major asphalt contractor within 60 miles pull bids. But these are the bidders that submitted proposals. Onyx Paving of Anaheim was the lowest responsible bidder. Base bid total was $358,000. Add alternate one, which is Barton Road, was $110,000. And add alternate two, which is Locadina, was $195,000, for a total of $663,000. Our engineer's estimate was $850,000, which is about 25% less. We were pleasantly surprised it was this low. We, we collect data from a number of cities, and we were expecting to be within 10%. But we're, I think we picked a good time to bid this project. Just a little bit of the CIP timeline. We went out to bid January 18, bid closed February 16. Here we are to award contract tonight. The start of work is projected to be March 15, and completion of work should, would be around June 7, if this timeline holds. Our recommendation is to find that the road maintenance and rehabilitation project is categorically exempt from the SEQA pursuant to SEQA regulations, Sections 15, 301, Paragraph C, and authorize the preparation and filing of a notice of exemption as applicable. And we further recommend to award the road maintenance and rehabilitation project, CIP 2021-1, to Onyx Paving Company, and approve the public works agreement with Onyx Paving Company in the amount of $663,000, plus a 10% contingency of $66,300 for the construction of the road maintenance and rehabilitation project of CIP 21-1. For A, the base bid of $358,000, B, add alternate one, Barton Road from City Limit to Honey Hill, $110,000, and C, add alternate two, Locadina from Barton Road to Litten Avenue, $195,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, subject to the city attorney's approval as to form. And also to authorize revenue and expense appropriations. And I believe we have Ms. Fortune, is she available? She want, she's available, she can discuss this. But I might mention, the other option has to do with only accepting the base bid or the base bid and one of the alternates. But those are the options. But staff is recommending that we award the base bid with both add alternates. Is Ms. Fortune available to cover? There she is.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. As Mr. Weiss had provided, should the city council approve recommendation two, as shown in their page packet, 340, 341, and 342, they are to approve the additional appropriations to provide full funding of the agreement. As he mentioned earlier, the agreement is for $663,000, plus a 10% contingency of $66,300, which will total $729,300. Should city council choose that, therefore approval of all tables would use the funding sources mentioned in all those tables, whether it is gas tax, RMRA, rehabilitation, maintenance, and fund, measure I contribution, and the use of excess bond proceeds. Now, should council only choose to award recommendation number three, they will only need to approve table one, which is the use of measure I and gas tax, which, which includes the base bid, plus the add alternate one, which I believe is Barton Road. Yeah, so the difference between the two is adding Locadina and the use of excess bond proceeds. Just to make sure city council understands that. And unfortunately for, for our accounting, we require the approval of all these tables to set up the expense appropriations accordingly. That includes the finance impact of the report. If Mr. Bradshaw would like the floor back, otherwise he and I will be more than happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Are you ready for questions, Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Wilson?
My first question would be, Craig, there is a $60,000 difference or variance between four bidders and one bidder. Do we have any idea what that variance represents?
Onyx Paving, they're, they're a good contractor. They have had a lot of different contracts the last two years with major, major contracts and contracts very similar to this size. And we've checked some references, and they're an excellent contractor. I think they're, they're just looking for work.
So they might be, in, in the colloquialism of the trade, maybe buying the job, so to speak?
Well, yeah, they left, we say left money on the table, but it's a competitive bid process, and they were, they wanted the project.
The only concern I have is, is that 20% is a pretty healthy, you know, chunk of change, not over the overall, but in just the, you know, the base bid. And base bids are kind of hard to squeeze that much extra money out of and not have at least some profit in it. So if they're doing it for practice, that's great. I'm just a little concerned that they know something that we don't know.
Now, I, I talked to the vice president, who provided the bid, Mr. Karchner, and he was excited to have the project. And they, I gave him the timeline. We're looking at it starting around March 15. And he says, we can perform. We have staff to do it. So I, I think we have a good contractor.
Good. Then my second question revolves around the traffic plan. And that is, I know that they have a chunk of cash plugged in for traffic control, but it would seem to me that the due process for us would be to include a traffic plan that's submitted ahead of their, of their work, so that we can at least approve it, or, you know, make, have them make modifications. Where we get in trouble is when we have a, a city that has two, maybe three main drags, and we have, you know, people having to drive around everything in the world that works great for the contractor, not so well for, not, not so well for the community. So, you know, in the, in the range of protecting the needs of the community, I think it would be important that we had a approvable traffic plan ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. We will have a pre-job meeting, and that'll all be laid out. We are also inviting the contractor that's doing work for the city of Colton that's actually within the city of Grand Terrace, and we need to coordinate that timeline. But all that'll be handled in our pre-job meeting.
Ten-four, thank you.
Further questions? Can you tell me a little bit about the notice that you'll give to the residents when the work's being done in residential sections?
The residential section, 48 hours in advance, they, they will receive a door flyer. And there will also be posting, no parking signs will be posted for 48 hours in advance. And we look at all of those and see how far they have to walk. And most of these streets, there's, there's good alternate routes. The cul-de-sacs, there's, there's two cul-de-sacs. They're relatively short.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, no other questions of staff? We'll open it to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the agenda.
Okay, so staff recommendations, including all three?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, we have to clarify, because it's either one and two or one and three.
Okay, I'm sorry. So you want one and two? That was what the staff was actually asking us to do. But we do have the alternative to say one and three.
Yes, so one and two is basically the full package.
Okay.
The, the base bid with both alternatives. That would require the additional adoption of the resolution. Item, option one and three is only the base bid and alternate one.
Option one and two.
Okay. So motion for option one and two? Okay, so I have a motion by Mayor Protem Hussey for options one and two, and a second by Councilmember Robles.
Madam Mayor, may I make an alternate suggestion?
Sure.
Or motion? I move that we go for a, item one and item two only, no Locadina.
Would that be one and three?
So that would be our base bid plus the stuff that goes on Barton Road from the city limit to Honey Hill.
Okay, so that would be option one and three. Is that correct?
It's one and two.
One and three is Barton Road from city limit to Honey Hill.
Yeah.
Okay, without Locadina. Okay, so that's the alternate motion you're making?
Yes.
Items one and three. Councilmember Allen?
Is this the appropriate time that I could ask Councilmember Wilson the reason for that?
Sure.
My reasoning on that situation is, is that we have a combined use on that road, and I know that technically we're responsible. But I believe that there's also going to be some paving that's going to be done, some substantial paving. It's going to be done in that area, and it's always possible for us to be able to combine that use without the move in cost and so on. So I'd like to see if that can be looked at. For right now, I'd rather contain our stuff to the stuff that we don't have so much combined use on.
Thanks. I have a question. I'll ask you, Mayor, because I'm not quite sure who to address it to, perhaps city manager. But on one of the pages on the packet, which I'm not on there right now, but it, it highlights that we will be moving in excess of $200,000 out of the Mount Vernon Slope Rehabilitation Fund. To cover this, now, what I'm wondering is, my question would be, Councilmember, would we still need to do that if we adopted Councilmember Wilson's motion?
Well, if you look at package page, packet page 338, it's a, it's a smaller table, and the alternate number two is $195,000 as bid by Onyx. So.
But you know, we.
And, and so you were saying that on table two, use of bonds?
Yeah.
289. Is Director Fortune available? Oh, City Manager Duffy?
Yes, she is available. We can get her to answer the question. But one bit of information that I, I'm, I have to share with the council is, so when we do these road projects, we are required to do a maintenance effort. And that, what that means is you have to put your own money in to help support these projects. And so if you choose one and, if you choose the staff's recommendation, those bond proceeds that we use to do Locadina, they will be our maintenance effort. We are required to do a minimum of $150,000 every year of, of maintenance effort, either the general fund or something else, combined with our, with our projects. When we receive road money, we are required to provide a maintenance effort. So we will have to spend that general fund money somewhere this year, or it carries over to the next year. But, but if you approve one and two, you will have met that effort by putting in non-road money as part of your road maintenance project. So Ms. Fortune can.
And Councilmember Allen, your concern is that we won't have money for the slope stabilization?
No, no, that's not my, my whole concern. It's the, is the, is the couple of hundred grand that's going to be taken from the slope stabilization fund, is that, was that to cover the cost of Locadina, or was that just to add to the pot to pay for everything?
That was, that was to cover the cost of Locadina.
Okay, so if.
Which, which allows us to meet our maintenance effort for the year.
So we get 150 grand, you just said? Or we have to do 150 grand worth of?
Yes, so Ms. Fortune, can you maybe comment on that component?
Yes. Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Allen, City Manager Duffy is correct. We have to meet a maintenance of effort in order to keep receiving our gas tax funds, street roads and maintenance, and that's a maintenance effort that we have to meet via the General Fund. In doing Options One and Two, as he had stated, it will help us meet that effort. One and Three does not include Lockadina. And Lockadina is the one that we need, is the one that is requesting the use of the excess bond proceeds. Does, did I explain, did I answer your question, sir?
It's a, yeah, that explains it. So is this a requirement that the state imposes on us in order to get the gas tax money?
Yes, and the requirement is that you spend a certain amount of money to help support your own roads. So you, you can, you can just decide to do one and, one and three, but then we have to spend that money somewhere throughout the year in order to meet our maintenance of effort.
And one and three doesn't total $150,000?
No, one and three is only, only gas tax money, only, only road money. There's no General Fund or any other component there, it's just road money. And so that, what that means is you do one and three tonight, you, we will have to come back with a project to show that we've contributed to our road system out of our, out of our General Fund.
Okay.
But if you do one and two, you, you will meet that component.
Okay, thank you, I get it.
Okay, and Councilmember Wilson, your concern is that Lockadina is going to be paved at a later date, and we might have a better opportunity to partner with City of Colton, and so maybe there's another project that would be worthwhile in the city?
Yes, I guess my question, Mayor, would be, is there any reason why we can't use it in someplace else in the city and justify our outlay?
Mr. Duffy?
You, you can, absolutely. You'd have to find a project in order, in order to do it.
Okay, so, so we have a motion for one and three, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it, but I still have a question about it.
Okay.
Earlier, just a minute ago, you said something about if we don't contribute this year, it gets rolled over to the next year? Is that correct? Because my, my question is going to be, will we be penalized in some way if we do not show our contribution from our General Fund?
Yes, so what will happen is next year, you will need to take $300,000 of your General Fund in order to meet your maintenance of effort. If you don't meet your maintenance of effort and you continuously not to meet the maintenance of effort, you run the risk of losing your gas, your, the rest of your road money.
And so we have until the end of June?
Yeah.
To spend that money? Or it would roll over for next year?
The.
And we'd have twice as much?
The requirement to do so would roll over to next year, yes.
Okay, all right, so I have a, an alternate motion of one and three from Councilmember Wilson and a second by Councilmember Allen. Is there any more discussion? All right, so we'll take that one first. Madam City Clerk, will you call the vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
No.
Mayor Protem Hesse?
No.
Mayor McNaboe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and so since that motion passes, we will not take a vote on the original And so, staff will move forward with Items One and Three. And we will move on to Item 10 on our agenda, which is consideration for use of Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 virus, additional funding and authorization for the use of these funds. Mr. Steve Weiss, Planning and Development Services Director, giving Mr. Bradshaw a break tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you is Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Update. So the vision is Goal Four, which is develop and implement successful partnerships. The Community Development Block Grant Program funds community programs that benefit Grand Terrace's residents. In turn, Grand Terrace, as we all know, is a place where residents can enjoy quality of life that fosters pride and an engaged community. So a little bit of background on the Coronavirus Community Development Block Grant. Back in March of last year, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities, which is the CARES Act, was signed into law to respond to the growing effects of this historic public health pandemic. United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, released a special allocation of Community Development Block Grant Funds to San Bernardino County as a preemptive measure through prevention and preparation in response to the coronavirus or COVID-19. The program requirements are, it supports activities that prevent and/or respond to the spread of the coronavirus or COVID-19 or other infectious diseases. It benefits low and moderate income residents, and actually, the city's allocation for CDBG based on the formulas through the federal government funds is $100,000. So in turn, on May 12th of 20, the City Council approved staff's recommendation to utilize the eligible COVID funding of $100,000 to support the food bank partnerships and additional funding for the San Bernardino County Sheriff Homeless Outreach and Proactive Enforcement Program, or also known as Project Hope. So newer events, on September 8th of 2020, the City Council approved the eligible funding of $100,000 to support food bank partnerships, emergency rent mortgage, and utility payment assistance in it, and also assisting homeless placement in safe housing. So the program has evolved because of the uncertainty of COVID. So more updates here. The city, in coordination with county staff, identified the following two programs for funding that are more closely aligned with HUD's mission, which is Emergency Rent Mortgage and Utility Payment Assistance Program, and also assisting homeless placement in safe housing through partnerships with nonprofit organizations. These are two areas that the city does not have the direct expertise, but would, would work with a, an agency, a nonprofit agency. So just on December 20th, a couple months ago, the county announced the release of a third round of coronavirus, also known as CV3. The city received an allocation of $41,010 for eligible COVID-19 newer existing programs. Based on discussions with the county and also a group known as Lighthouse Social Services, these funds could help bolster the rental payment assistance and homeless housing assistance programs that could use additional funding to provide additional assistance to the community. And we did meet with Lighthouse, they're agreeable to this. Upon City Council recommendation, they would be willing to enter into the contract. So a little bit of showing how this, how this, how the original funding authorization worked, there was $16,000 for food bank partnership, and then the other $84,000 was for Project Hope, which equals $100,000. So based on, so based on the additional funding, a little bit of rearrangement here, so we're still keeping the $84,000 for Project Hope, but moving $41,010 over for the, for the nonprofit housing assistance and utility assistance. So the recommendation, instead of $100,000, would now be $125,010. So recommendation would be authorize staff to update the contracts for CDBG Coronavirus Program funding by combining the rent mortgage and utility pavement assistance program with the homeless housing assistance program, and to approve staff's recommendation for additional COVID CV3 funding in the amount of $41,010 for a total of $125,010. So upon approval of the additional funding, staff will then return to the City Council to execute an agreement with Lighthouse Social Services to administer the program, and at that time, Lighthouse will be here too, to provide a presentation to you. So at this point, that concludes staff presentation. I'm available to, for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Questions of staff at this time? All right, no questions. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we'll close public comment and bring it back for consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'll make the motion for Recommendation One and Two and Three.
And Three, all right, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Staff recommendation moved by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hesse?
Yes.
Mayor McNaboe?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. We have no request for future agenda items, so we'll move to City Council Communications. We'll begin with Councilmember Allen.
Mayor, I didn't attend any functions for the city since our last meeting, but before our next one, I think, I'm not sure, but the Blue Mountain hike's coming up, and I want to, and it's a big deal for us, so I encourage everyone to show up and enjoy the mountain this time. It's on May the 7th this year. I mean, March 7th, March 7th. Yeah, March 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Mayor, I'd like to report that we, the Ad-Hoc Committee has worked with the city attorney, city manager regarding the piece of legislation that we discussed, and we are close to bringing it back to, to the council for deliberation of vote.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse?
I just have one thing I'd like to congratulate grocery outlet on their year anniversary, and it's a blessing when they did come in right before the pandemic, so they really helped out the city big time. So congratulations to Eric and Pacilla. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem Hesse, and I do not have any communications tonight. So we will go to City Manager Harold Duffy. Do you have communications for us?
Yes, Mayor, very briefly though. So an update for, oh, that's, can't use that slide, that's the wrong date, okay, so this is basically the, we're going to have the Blue Mountain Walk on Blue Mountain for 2021. It will be on Sunday, March 7th, at 8:00 a.m. A little bit different from the past years is that we are extending the time to allow people to take the time so they don't, they don't bunch up. We're not having an opening ceremony, we'll be, we'll do a communication message that we'll send out, but you can come now until 12:30. And you, but once 2 o'clock, you can't come into the park after 12:30, and at 2 o'clock, we will be moving people down the hill. So if you don't make it up by 2, you're going to be, you're not going to make it up there. So we're going to make sure that we get out of there as soon as possible at 2 o'clock. But it's, this is additional time to allow people to come into the park. Used to, you couldn't come in after 10:30, but we extended it a couple hours this year. There will be, you must have masks to enter. You can get online and get your, your form for your liability waiver form. There will be water stations, there will be bottled water there, there won't be manned people there, there'll be someone nearby, but you'll get your own water, there'll be water down below. We're trying to minimize the unnecessary contact on the trip, but certainly, this is an event we wanted to have because it's outdoors and it's, it's a fun activity. We've had over 7,000 views of this on our Facebook page and 29 shares. It's been very, it's one of the most popular items that we put on the, on the Facebook page. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Duffy. So we have no closed session tonight. Next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 9th, and so we'll adjourn to that day at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office. The request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.